And thank you all for being here this evening. The first item on tonight's work session will be a presentation by Fairhope East Elementary School and their three mil tax, overlay district tax, Principal Christina Stacy.
Okay. I don't want to get in trouble.
Yep, you're good.
Okay, everybody has the presentation? And does anybody need a paper copy? Oh, you have them, that's so great. Thank you, first of all, for allowing me to be here. I know some of my other principal friends have also been here. I want to start by talking about what you're looking at because you see numbers, you see colors, you see graphs. Last year I did a video and I thought, I really want to help make you understand the impact that the three mil has not only on our school, but all of the schools in the feeder pattern, as well as our community. And what an amazing partnership we have between the three mil and Baldwin County Public Schools because without both of those, we are not as successful as we currently are. What we do at Fairhope East is we use the majority of our three mil funds on people because effective people have effective results. And that is what we wholeheartedly believe. And what do these people do? So these people are interventionists, these people, we have a math coach, we have instructional coach, we have STEAM lab. So last week, we were sitting in a public school commission's meeting and we said, okay, we know we have a fantastic feeder pattern, we have a fantastic school system, but we are Fairhope, we are always going to go above and beyond, and this three mil money allows us to do that. So those people are incredibly, incredibly important in our success. So if you look at your very first graph, the interventionist I spoke about, these people are meeting in small groups with children who have significant gaps in their learning. So maybe I'm in first grade, or I'm in third grade, but I'm currently showing that my grade level equivalent is first grade. So these people are going in, pulling these children for 30 to 40 minutes, three to four times a week, and they are filling these gaps. And you can see, the goal is to be dismissed from tier three. That means you've made enough progress and enough gains. So you can see on there, in second grade, 16% where tier three has been decreased, 26% in third grade, 55% in fourth grade. That's tremendous. And those kids missed a quarter of pre-K. Fifth grade, 18%. We want that final end of the year, we progress monitor three times a year, more than that really, but officially three times a year. So we want that really dark green line to be the furthest. So that shows you in reading, we have reading interventionists who do that. We have moved from a lot of part-time to full-time interventionists. That money has allowed us to do that. If you look at the next slide.
Can I stop you?
Oh, my gosh, of course, I love questions.
Let me ask some questions.
Oh, my gosh.
What are the numbers at the bottom of the chart? Are those?
Okay, that is a scaled score. So when the child takes the STAR progress monitoring test, there is a scaled score. They get that, it's, we look at that, but we also look at the grade level equivalent and the percentile rank. Depending on what grade they're in, it will differ because they're all, you know, our little people are taking a different test. It doesn't necessarily measure all the reading, but it tests skills.
Why does it show a gradual increase from kindergarten to fifth grade? And I know that their tests are all differently. And then there's, the sixth grade seems to show a lower score than the fifth and the fourth.
Well, okay, so the STAR, basically, as you take it, the more you answer correctly, the more challenging the questions become. So you can take the STAR test for 12 minutes, or you might take it for 35 minutes, depending on what you're, you specifically, you individually show your first, where you are testing, okay? So it depends on, overall, it kind of depends on how the grade achieves, but also how the individuals. So let me give you an example. I have a daughter in eighth grade. She took the STAR, she was in a full panic, she said, "My percentile went down, and my scaled score went down." I said, "Oh, my gosh, honey, well, what was your grade level equivalent?" She said, "Greater than 12th grade." So it's not necessarily linear, you're not looking at it like that. You're looking at overall achievement. And if you already, I'll say this, and we do, this is a great problem to have. If you're already testing above grade level, it is really, really hard to increase because you begin to get more challenging questions. Could be content standards you haven't learned yet. So that's why you see that, and as it gets, they get older, it gets more challenging.
And that's also why it gets harder to improve your overall rating if you're in a 95, you know? Now, I like you going from 45 to 55.
That's right.
You're going from 95, it's hard to get to.
It is. You know, we just talked about that.
100 is probably impossible, so you're, you reach diminishing returns.
Like, I'll use my daughter again, her scaled score and her percentile rank went down, but her grade equivalent went up. It's just the way the test is, and it really...
I kind of thought it was probably something like that.
It is. Yes, sir. Anybody else have another question? Okay, I love a question. But that data, that chart shows a great, great increase for us because our goal is for those people to come off tier three. All right, the next graph is about kindergarten. We don't typically start kindergarten intervention until the second semester because we are just getting to know them, and they are getting to know us. So the biggest, the biggest jump here is the beginning of the year, our students were 55%, were showing mastery. You'll see that there. So that's the beginning of the year. We give them that in September, when we can't even find the bathroom yet. So in the end of the year, you'll see that it jumped to 76%, and that is a really great jump. And many of them will continue that progress. But the kindergarten is important because we don't start that intervention until the end, and we do a push-in model, which is really effective. And they can, STAR considers the 40th percentile benchmarking. There's a little discrepancy in 82 and 76, but that's a test, that's a testing thing. STAR gives you a report, and you want all your kids in green, dark green, or light green, but at the end of the year, it still shows them on benchmark in blue, but, so it looks like a discrepancy, but it's 76% there. So that's a great progress for our kindergarteners. Any questions about that? Okay. Okay, this is something that I'm really excited about because we use our three mil money for an ELL interventionist. Our Hispanic population is our biggest subgroup. So we have a large subgroup of Hispanic, we have a smaller group that is in tier three. So this sampling shows you 10 students who are in ESL intervention right now. We found a teacher, she was basically like finding a unicorn. She was a reading coach, she is bilingual, she has a reading degree, she has been through all of our trainings, and she was also an ESL teacher at one point. So we use her to specifically intervene with our ESL population. We, prior to, this year and prior, we had a part-time ESL teacher. That is really hard when that's your biggest subpopulation of about 70 kids. We use that money, we saw there was a need, and we can move these kids, and these kids are moving. We can move these kids if we're intervening, if we're teaching in conjunction with the ESL teacher, things, reading skills, reading standards. And that's what they're doing. She is really, really impactful, and they have made tremendous gains. Their, on our report card, where we have academic growth and academic achievement, that needle has moved tremendously. And we're at 100% in both of those categories.
And the three mil taxes allowed you to be able to do that?
We couldn't do that without three mil. I can't, I can't have interventionists, and I cannot have ESL interventionist specifically for that group. And she is with a group all day, every day. I heard her today, going at it with them. And we have eight days of school left, and we are still pushing forward.
That's huge, right? Because, you know, you want, you have 70 kids left behind, and they're not reading proficiently.
That's huge.
Your scores just...
That is absolutely...
I would say could, I would say will, but could fall.
They absolutely could. They're, because when you, when you get a child who is ESL, they are in a newcomer program when they come to your school. So they have a couple of years to acclimate. Then they are tested like my child and your child, even though they may be brand new. So we do everything we can to move, we saw there was opportunity for growth and improvement there, and it has, it has changed that subgroup. Yep. All right. The next graph is just like the reading graph, but it is math. So you will see, we've had a really, really great show of numbers there. 31% in second grade, 50% in third grade, 50% in tier three in fourth grade, and 35% in fifth grade. And I want you to know that when we get these students released from tier three, that gives us an opportunity to work with other students. That gives them an opportunity to move high achieving students, or tier two students who are just having trouble with grade level skills and grade level content. It just opens up so much opportunity. But the interventionists are helping us move those kids along, and that is what then helps them become on grade level in whatever area it is. But I have, we have moved our model a little bit from part-time interventionists to being able to use the three mil money for more full-time interventionists. They're all certified teachers, my ESL unicorn teacher, she is also certified teacher. I love part-time interventionists, and they certainly have a role in a place, but they are part-time for a reason. They are retired teachers typically, they have families and grandchildren, and we want to provide the most opportunity for our kids, and that means having someone there five days a week. Okay, this next slide, I'm extremely excited about. I want, this is science, this is fourth grade science. If you don't know, we get tested in fourth and sixth grades in science by the A-CAP, so that's the state test. That is the measuring stick for science. Where the three mil helps us with this is I have an instructional coach and a STEAM lab teacher. So all the skills and content and standards they learn in the classroom are, they come to life in the STEAM lab. But also, my instructional coach plans with and teaches, co-teaches with my fourth and sixth grade teachers, science teachers. So they get an additional dip of hands-on, just really relevant and rigorous learning. That is from the instructional coach and the STEAM lab teacher, and that doesn't happen without three mil. So this is, okay, if you look at this chart, this is Fairhope East on the far right, of course, with 76% Baldwin County fourth graders scored 61% overall, and the state average for a fourth grade was 50%. We are 26% above them. We were the highest in Baldwin County last year. We were about ninth in the state. We noticed the year before, our scores were not that. So we went back to the drawing board and reflected and thought, well, how can we get better? And it was by getting all the right people in the right places and doing the instruction together. The next slide is simply the same, but it is the scaled score. That doesn't mean a whole lot, but it does show that we are still above the county and state average. The next slide I did notice was a little harder to read, so let me explain what this is. To be considered proficient on the A-CAP, you, it's, you get a score of one, two, three, or four. Three and four considers you proficient. So for us, we had only 3% in, who scored a one, and like 21%, if I'm reading that correctly, who scored a two. We look at those in every area, whether it's math, science, or reading, we look, or ELA, we look at those kids who are ones and twos, especially those twos, we call them the bubble kids, they're right there, they can move, how do we get them there? We're trying to move all kids, but if you've missed the cut score by just a hair, we are wondering, what can we do to get you there? And that's where all these three mil funded people come into play. Any questions about fourth grade science? Because it gets me real excited. It does. It, that was a, that was, I'll be honest, that was an area of needing improvement for us, and we did it, and I'm just proud as I can be for them. The next one is sixth grade science. We don't have any measuring tools. The state does not do that. We have really tried. They don't, I don't know why, but they don't measure us against other, they don't give out that information. So we've asked, but we were 81% in sixth grade science against the county, other sixth grade in the county. Overall, they were 62% proficient, and statewide, sixth graders were 50% proficient. So we were 31% above that. And you can see the next graph also represents that, and then the final one represents the breakdown of score. The yellow is one, green is two, blue is threes, and the purples are fours. Any questions for me?
Questions, council? It may have been Jay Larry Newton's principal. Like you said, we've had, we've had a few presentations so far, and they gave like an overall score of...
Yes. Yes, it's next. I am very proud to tell you that our score overall for our report card was a 97. We are the highest in the county. And I don't say that boastfully, I say it because...
I didn't tee that up for her, I didn't know.
He did, he did.
I'm glad I asked the question.
I say that, no, it's, oh, you know I wrote that on here, you guys, I wasn't going to leave without saying that. I say that because being a teacher is the hardest job on this planet, and when I go to my teachers and I say, "We really got to look at this, what can we do to get better?" It's never a, "Oh, we can't do that," or, "Mmm, that's probably not going to work." It's a, "Tell us how, help us, help us get there." And I love that attitude about them. We were, we were 95, 96, and when we got that 97 this year, I was like, "Ah, that is amazing." It just proves that what we're doing is working, and we cannot, I'm telling you, we cannot do it without the three mil. We can't. It is the most impactful part of, or some of the most impactful, everybody is impactful, but the way they can individualize things and help students and bring that together with the gen ed teacher and figure out a way to help students move is just, it's amazing to watch. But we cannot do it, and I am so thankful. This has been really a game changer for us, not only as a school, but as a feeder pattern.
Where do you go from here?
Oh, we keep working. We're going to keep working, we're going to keep moving, kids. We're drilling down to get to the, really, the nitty-gritty of things because at a 97, you got to think, I just, I just said, and some of you are, some of you are going to like this, and some of you are not. But my husband and I often comment about this. It's like the Nick Saban of football. Is it harder to get to the top, or is it harder to stay at the top? So I refuse to let our teachers believe they cannot stay at the top because we're going to stay at the top. So what do we have to do? We kind of have to drill down and say, where are these little pockets that need more intervention or to address this a little deeper, or find out what is the root cause of that? But it's going to be a little more individualized, a little smaller group, because our teachers are killing it. And I'll put them up against everybody, anybody and everybody. Is that all? Any more questions?
Just end the council meeting on that right there?
Oh, yes, absolutely. Do you want me to make a motion or something? No, I'm just kidding. I'm kidding, guys, I'm kidding. Seriously, thank you very much, I really appreciate it. I very, I very much appreciate it.
Thank your staff.
I tried it off, but it didn't work.
Please tell your staff congratulations.
Thank you, I sure will. All right, I'm going to a very intense 9-10 championship game.
Yell out.
Yeah. Oh, don't worry.
All right. Next item on our agenda, mid-year financial review. City Treasurer, Kim Creach.
I don't know if I can have some impressive numbers like that school does.
I know, are you going to be able to post something like that?
Really? First, I just want to talk about our cash balances compared to last year to this year. And do y'all have these up? Okay. As you can see, cash balances from last year at the same time period to now is up. And the main driver is the water and wastewater, where we borrowed the additional funding for projects, that those, the cash is still there. We've spent some down, but the cash is there. So you can see in total, that's our big change. Do you have any questions on any of those balances?
I guess I would ask, on the general fund, when you look at that, the big numbers, is that also because we collect our property taxes earlier in the fiscal year, and then we spend those funds down, right?
That is correct. The big chunk comes in January, and then it, we'll still collect through May usually, that's when the county does their tax sale and collects just a little bit. But currently, we're at, we've collected what we budgeted so far. But, and you'll see that a little down, so I, but I'll just tell you, I borrowed from general fund for the restore, the working waterfront, most of those invoices that come in are about a half a million to the million dollar invoices, and then it takes about 90 days to get reimbursed. So you'll see that.
I hadn't flipped through this yet, Kim. So on the gas department fund, is any of that debt, and the, is any of that balance as a result of borrowing that we just haven't spent down?
Not on the gas or electric.
Water and wastewater.
It's just water and wastewater.
I knew the water and wastewater was, yeah. But we're getting interest on that, too.
That's right.
But that, the gas, I mean, that looks, that's pretty good.
Yeah, they, they had a good winter.
Cool.
Gas department had a good winter.
You guys have any questions on that page?
Here's on sales tights. I think our sales tights is doing good for six months. We're at 3% increase. The budget was, is at 3.8% increase, so I still think we'll be still fine throughout the year. We still have some good months coming through. Simplified sellers' use tights were up 15.2%, and what we budgeted was actually lower than what we collected in '24, so all of this is going to hit way, way over budget. But the one thing that's going on in Alabama and a lot of the cities is that we're seeing the sales tights trend go down, simplified sellers' use is going up. So I know there's, there's some legislation, or there's, there's a group that's trying to push for some changes to the simplified sellers' use tights, where some businesses are being brought into the online, paying through simplified sellers' use tights versus as being collected on the local level. So we'll...
So, yeah, I want to just point out that we saw a really big increase in March, which historically, we don't see. And we historically see a pretty good increase in April, which we may not see. And I suspect that some of this is to people buying in anticipation of tariffs being levied and the cost of goods going up, and a lot of people have, you know, went out and bought things that they, you know, suspected were going to go up. We had good news come out on that today, so we may not be stuck in that for more than a month or so, but I wouldn't be surprised if April doesn't reflect that.
And in a meeting that me and Mayor went to in Tuscaloosa, is that some of these grocery stores where people have normally gone into the grocery stores, that's our local tights, but now they're relying on these online, delivered to my house. And so the state of Alabama has allowed some of those vendors to go into the Amazon type, what is, we call it Amazon, but it's to the simplified sellers' use tights. So the resident is paying 8% tax, it's delivered to their house versus going to the grocery store, and at the grocery store, they would pay for, Fairhope's rate is nine and a half percent. Fairhope is not very, is getting very little of that tax when it goes through all the calculations, versus if they went to Walmart and picked that up. So Walmart, Walmart is one of them that's charging a different rate if you're doing it on the app and deliver to your house. And so we're, I know there's some pushes, there's a lot of push from some larger cities to try to get some of that changed. So that's where the, we, you know, spoke with Foley, Foley's seeing these same numbers that we're seeing, too. Lodging tax is doing very well. We budgeted 3.2%, and so it's, we look at it that they're having some nice conferences probably at the Grand Hotel, that's filling up their beds. Do y'all have any questions on any of these numbers here? And we'll go over the graphs. And here you can see where, you can see that big spike in March, that was in March, our collections in March for sales tights. And then simplified sellers' use tights, that line's just staying way above. And then lodging tights. And then you can see how, as the summer months come, we'll collect more in the lodging tights. And here's our revenues. As you, as you can see, like you answered the question on property tights, where we've collected, we'll collect majority of ours in the first, the first half of the year, and we'll collect the rest, like by the end of May. The local, the local taxes, I think we're doing good on that. Those are just big numbers. The permits, permits is doing very well. And then the big number that you see down at the bottom, that's, that's in other revenues is, that is going to be our fees for admin and collections for the utility bills. That also includes our transfers and miscellaneous revenues. So do y'all have any questions?
You did, I'm sorry, I was, I was trying to read and listen. So the other included, were you talking about the other line there?
The other, yeah, that other revenue, just, it's just a big chunk that we threw into one category, but that is the admin and the collections fees that comes back through the utilities, the transfers from the utilities. And then we have some state grants in there, and then miscellaneous revenues.
And the other line's really skewing the total number, too.
Yes.
Quite a bit, yeah.
Do you have any questions on any of those?
Questions?
And then, as you can see, you know, what we have remaining to collect in revenues, 46%. And then our expenses, we're actually, in total for general fund, the expenses is actually on the low side. But we still, as we'll go through, we have some capital projects, you know, usually is the lay-in on our expenditures. Do you have any questions on this slide?
I just think, Kim, and Jimmy's been on the council quite a while now, but just in the changes that we've seen, Kevin, these numbers just, you have to get used to it. You can't think like 2012, can you?
Anything.
It's tough.
As you can see through these departments, expenses, you know, they're right at 50% to a little better than 50%, which some of them that are... to a little better than fifty percent, which some of them that are a little bit higher, there's some capital that's still left to be spent. You have any questions on any of those departments? And then here's where you-
Can you go back?
Oh.
Sorry.
And then here's on general fund capital, and that's, that's where you can see what we budgeted compared to what we've already spent so far. And some of it's, we've ordered, you know, on the equipment, it's been ordered, waiting on, waiting on the items to come in. And then on, on the capital, you know, still, those projects are continuing. A lot of what's, what's under general fund capital is a lot of rec, rec department projects that are underway. You have any questions there? Next, this is the salaries where we compared to budget. And we're, looks like we're all in line at six months. Do you have any questions there? And then over, overall salaries, we're at fifty-six percent left in our budget for overall. And we'll go into utilities. And I wanted to ma, I've made a note on every one of these utilities on looking at their, their revenue. When you're trying to look at their revenues only collect, you know, we've got remaining sixty-two percent to collect. But the note is, we had five point five million in gas. That was some, was rollover for capital projects. So they have the, which is the cast iron replacement. So we were able to use reserves to be able to fund that project. And, and you, and you can see on capital systems, what is budgeted, it's six point three. And I believe you are awarding that cast iron tonight. So that project will hopefully be finished by the end of the year. Do you have any questions on gas? And electric, same thing. There is money, five point two million that was used for rollover cash to fund the capital projects and budgeted five point three in capital systems improvements. And so, those projects are on, on the way of being, I guess, started.
Page two will go along, page two of our agenda will go a long ways toward making up those expenditures.
Yeah, I know. Same situation with water. And then, we have projects that, several projects that are going on in water and in sewer. But we use, we budgeted nine million in rollover for projects. And also, there's ten million dollars that was from the loan proceeds to fund capital projects. You have any questions on water?
Do we see that catching up by the end of the fiscal year? Are there just a lot of big budgeted items that we haven't expensed yet? I mean, it's, it's still at almost eighty-one percent remaining. So, I know we have so much going on, but are we gonna, is that, is that gonna be near?
We've got two projects, I mean, obviously one tonight. And then you have the Porstman project, that's also a going budget this year, the one-on-one eighty-one that we, that we discussed, so that we have to make some decisions on.
And wastewater, same thing. We budgeted nine million in, in revenue rollover. And we also have twelve million in loan proceeds for those capital projects. And one of the large projects is on this, tonight's agenda. Do you have any questions on wastewater? And sanit, sanitation, you know, sanitation's pretty, pretty steady on their revenue. So you can see we're at fifty-one percent. And it's, expenses, we're at fifty-six percent. So as of right now, we're doing, doing, according to budget, we're doing well. Do you have any questions on sanitation?
Nice to see that in the block.
And this is the utilities salaries, and you can see they're on target. You have any questions? So that was a high-level view, and you also get financial, detailed financials every month. So, do you have any questions?
A good mid-year checkup.
Thought it was.
Alright, thank you.
Thanks, Kim. Okay, next on the agenda discussion of the grand, I guess that's Grand Avenue and Bond Secure Drainage Project from Public Works Director George Ladd.
Also, council have that plan on your, at your seat, and also pictures from that project.
Good evening. Did I just push the enter button? Arrows, okay. So, the project that we are talking about currently is at Grand and Bond Secure, the unopened right-of-way of Bond Secure, where it crosses across the gully in the back, back there. We have had a, basically Hurricane Sally exposed a significant outfall issue to where the outfall failed in Hurricane Sally, and it has been progressively getting worse. We were hoping that it would nurse itself along and, and survive, but it is not, it's getting worse. And then in the meantime, we have developed another problem on the same project to where there's a lot of sheet-flowing rain coming from the adjacent properties uphill, running downhill that is causing some localizing channeling. And we have gotten with Sawgrass Engineering to engineer some mitigation for that project. And that's gonna be a new outfall structure, which I guess the drawings are on here. Here's a little video just to see what's going on in a heavy rain I was able to catch on Friday afternoon to show you the, the, the water that is accumulating to the, from the properties to the west and sheet-flowing down. It is actually not coming from the road. It is all coming from property to the west, and you can see it accumulating and then creating two channels coming down and cutting. Lost her video. Oh, really? I sent you the wrong one? Dad, burn. Well, the other video that I had, I panned around and showed the significant amount of water that's coming down from Grand, from Ingleside. And it has got some eddies that are forming around the drain boxes, but they don't actually breach it. It comes close, but they don't ever breach the berm going over into where the, the outfall structure is currently failed. But I just wanted y'all to see the amount of water, because a large part of the project that is in the, the drawings that Sawgrass has put together for us is in the armoring of the embankment going all the way down the side of the gully to protect from the sheet-flowing. And I just wanted y'all to see that it's not just the outfall structure. The outfall structure is failing and is jeopardizing the integrity of the road. But I also wanted y'all to see the sheet-flowing rain. And Richard is also very in on this project. As you can see, part of the outfall structure on this set of drawings right here, the outfall structure that, is it the, at the top left? I guess my cursor works?
We can't, but we can see those monitors.
Oh, you can't?
Oh, there it is now, I see it now. It is on our-
This is basically the part that is failing right now. And we are talking about taking the pipe and making a new drop inlet that falls down to it and then extending the pipe down the gully to try to get to where the ditch is more level, like a flatter, a flatter outfall.
George, when was that outfall built or repaired last?
Well, well before my time here, I can tell you that much.
I'm not trying to pick. A, a long time.
A long time ago.
Okay.
It's got some metal corrugated pipe down there in the bottom of it. It's got some old, what we call butt joint pipe, concrete pipe. If you had to guess, when would you say?
I was probably thinking that neighborhood was developed, probably the early seventies, sixties?
It's been quite some time. And as you can see, the, which I apologize for the video that I sent, he's adding extra, you have two current inlets that are there. You have one that is just to the west of the, of the actual structure that is failing now that'll be already there, but he's gonna add a wing to it to try to catch some of the water coming off of it. He's gonna add the, the inlet, am I saying that correctly? He's adding the inlet in the center? In the middle. And then the existing inlet that is just to the east, he's adding a wing to it as well. And then as you can see, we're also to try to catch some of the sheet-flow rain coming down off the properties from the west. We're adding a berm structure in with a drop inlet that is gonna get the, the water from the top of the hill to the bottom in a contained drainage system with an outfall protection on it. This job has grown for two reasons. The outfall structure has gotten worse than what we originally thought it was gonna be, and all the sheet-flowing water coming over the top is causing us to have to armor the ditch a lot farther. So there's a lot more fill that's required now, and more riprap and the extra drainage structures have been added. We have this in the budget. Currently, we are estimating that we are, I would say, a third of the price? About a third of the overall price is what we possibly have budgeted right now. And so what we are bringing to y'all tonight is the concept of what is going on. Councilman Boone and, and Councilman Martin came out and looked at the, the site last week. We wanted y'all to understand what was going on, understand the significance of it and how much worse it has gotten. And I guess wanting to know what y'all want us to do with it. If y'all want us to try to put it on the next council agenda to try to move forwards with the project, putting it out for bid, how do you want us to handle it?
What kind of, you said that we, you had budgeted a third of the cost of this.
That is correct.
What's that number? What's, what's the total cost estimated to be?
All we have is engineered estimates as of right now.
Rough order of magnitude? Tens of thousands, hundreds of thousands?
Hundreds of thousands. It's quite significant.
And that's one reason why we wanted to bring it to you tonight, just for, you know, let you know what's going on before we come back to you with the bid price. We have another drainage issue that we're dealing with after the heavy rains last week, too, that we're gonna discuss in just a minute. But again, these drainage projects, apparently the pipe that was put in, it's got a twenty-five-year life expectancy, correct me if I'm wrong?
Thirty-five to fifty, it's every bit of that.
And, and we are, we're finding in several areas that that pipe is failing. Councilman Boone probably can speak to that a little bit.
I also want to take the last page, that last picture? That's Bond Secure, right there. About six feet from that, seven feet from that hole.
From what I could tell, that's, that's why that middle box is gonna be so important.
Right.
Is the coming down, that Bond Secure, it's Grand Avenue. That's Grand Avenue, it's about six feet from that hole. Bond Secure goes straight up at a pretty good grade. Get the heavy rains, that sheet comes down, bypasses those two side boxes and hits straight into that center part and jumps over and creates that erosion.
And that's been going on for fifty years?
I can't say how long it has, because you had a lot of vegetation growth in there. Depends on the, you know, what's going on as far as what created this big hole now, because the dirt you're looking at now is fairly raw.
So, right around her, just before Hurricane Sally, I had to go in and put up, there, we were having a problem with water coming down Bond Secure and hitting Grand and, and coming over and caused the first scour that I've ever had.
That where you put the rocks in there?
This was before the structure itself, the drop structure itself failed. We had a scour on the, the same spot that we're having scours now. And I had, back when all it was, was just a utility pig trail going down through there, we had to build a berm all the way across to prevent the water from, from reaching over the top of it. And that's the only work that I can remember doing in that area before now.
When it was just a little utility trail?
So, when it, it's a, the, the power runs down through there, it's a power easement that goes through there. It's our city right-of-way, but all that used to just be open enough was for the gully and for our power line to run through there.
I'm just kinda looking for a cause. Did we clear out more? Did we clear the vegetation? I mean, has that led to more?
There's been more houses built along there, too.
Yeah, I just think it's runoff, you know, period, you know? But, the problem is, we have utilities right there that's, that those poles are standing, that is eaten up, that's not safe, you know? So, yep, so it's-
That's one of our main figures coming out of Atlanta. So, when George and I first went out there and looked at it, was like, we'd, we'd knock both of these projects out once, we'll just put pipe in as they build. We thought, we, we had thought initially they would probably build a wall through there, like a geowall. But they've come back and redid, did the design. So, now, to be able to get our power in there, we'll have to get it bored. Councilman Boone said it about best, if we go in there and start digging, we're just gonna create more of a- And it's, it's washed out more and more, so we have to-
Your second picture, Jack, shows-
I think that you're-
Trail goes down there where the telephone poles are.
When you say you're looking for a cause, I think it's a two-part cause. I think part of the problem is, is we had product failure in the drainage structure. And the second part is, there are considerably more houses opening up there, just to build in there. So you have more surface water running down there as well. So it's really a two-part thing.
Definitely velocity.
Well, then I guess we gotta get, put it out for bid, then. I mean, worst-case scenario, we'll, we'll know what it takes.
Problem you have with drainage, to be honest with you, there are no patches. You can't patch it. All it's gonna do is get even worse when it reaches the, the patch. So if you don't fix it the first time, you're gonna have a problem. And actually, I don't even know if you, there is no patch for this.
It's-
You can't patch, you can't go put more dirt in, put some more rock in, because it'll blow that rock out down the way.
It's definitely high velocity.
Yeah, there is no patch.
It's roughly twenty-two feet deep at that drop structure. But I mean, it's-
I thought it was deeper than that, I thought it was about forty.
Yeah.
But, yeah.
It's, and it's a straight fall.
You know, what, what, you know, well, I guess one of the questions that Council President is asking, he's asking the cause and effect, is sometimes, if you can figure out that backside, you can kinda build it to where you actually solve the problem. You know, and that's, I guess if we can kinda make sure when we put, if we choose to put these monies in, that we don't have to come back like we do in the past, where we, we're right back at it, putting another hundredths of K in the ground, you know? So, you know, I think that's, if we can kinda make sure that we follow those, you know?
I believe if we, if we do, I think this is a permanent fix. Sawgrass has done a, I would, I would imagine like any other project, they've done a calculation on all of the drainage in the area that's coming to there. They have designed this to probably be a hundred or more year flood. So it is a true fix, and if we can work with Ben and get the power out of the way and out of, out of- out of the way and out of, out of harm's way, I think we're a win-win situation all the way around.
I think the problem too is you can't get, you can't get a bucket truck in there right now at all.
For maintenance.
It's a problem area for sure.
Was it the canopy there or?
Supposedly the way, the way it's eroding right now, and they're gonna cause further erosion, the more you put a bucket truck in there.
The power poles are about six inches on our property.
Literally six inches. It's not exaggerated.
The easement for Barron Croft is the gully.
Six inches.
We can't, we can't get it off Barron Croft side because it's the gully.
Yeah.
Get some bids, I guess, my thought. I'm assuming that's your thought.
Yeah.
Thank you. Um, y'all wanna talk about Summit Street?
Yeah, I'm gonna get the double header.
So, on a, on a similar note, just as, as we had planned for this, as, you know, y'all approved the engineering for Bond Secure and Grand. We also had engineering approved for the, what we call the Summit Street Outfall at Stax Gully, which is directly behind the K One Center. And it took a pretty good hit during the rain event that we had in, in late December that also took out Section Street. So we hadn't expedited and got that, that engineering contract going. Uh, well, the storm that hit us on Friday afternoon, which was over about three inches in, in about an hour's time, plus a little bit more, uh, just caused that outfall to, to completely fail. And we've eroded, uh, the gully all the way up to the back of the curb line and partially under, uh, the section of Section, uh, of, of South Summit Street. Good news is the engineer is almost complete with his design. Um, what we did wanna kinda give you heads up, what we were gonna ask for is, is we're not gonna ask for an emergency declaration because the good news is we can close off that section of street. It does not harm anybody's access to private property. Since we own the property on the south side, we own most of the property, uh, excuse me, on the west side, most of the property on the east side. Uh, but we are gonna try to expedite the public bid process. Uh, our goal is that we are below the threshold of projects that only require the minimum advertisement period, which is a week. So our goal is to have contract documents complete, design complete, and go to advertisement this Friday. Do a one-week advertisement period. Uh, that Tuesday of that week, we'll hold a pre-bid meeting. George and I go out and, 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 uh, uh, wiggle the bushes and get our contractors, uh, uh, to, to look at it. Uh, with our goals to open bids the morning of Tuesday, the twenty-seventh, which is the day following Memorial Day, and ask for y'all's permission to bring it on to the agenda that night for consideration. Uh, that gets us from where we are with a problem today to hopefully a, a bid that could be awarded uh, in basically a two-week and one-day period of time, given the fact it takes an average, uh, we give fifteen days' notice proceed to also get contracts in place. Our goal would be to have a contractor there working by June fifteenth, uh, with a thirty-day, uh, project timeline to get that done. Again, I think I will set the expectations. I believe we also had seventy-five thousand dollars budgeted for that outfall. I think it's gonna be a little bit more than that just because of the fill material that has to go back in there that we had lost. Uh, we did have to deal with eight M today on this, this issue, and we did, uh, uh, give them a notice of, of what we're doing to try to, uh, stop that erosion problem. Uh, but, uh, as you haven't visited, it's a pretty deep cut. And, uh, again, uh, that outfall completely let loose during the, uh, the event this past Friday. So, uh, if that's agreeable to the council, we're gonna lean forward, try to have you, uh, numbers to consider and, and contracts to consider uh, two weeks and one day from today, if that's feasible.
Johnson, does that affect anything? Uh, it's item nine on the Stax Gully. Does that affect anything that's going on there?
No, the, you know, we, we, we ended up with a lot of sediment that moved around in that gully. Um, you know, because everything, that shoulder that you see that disappeared, it, it went downstream. But no, it had no effect on that project, so.
Didn't undo anything?
Yeah, no, that project did very well, actually, so. So that is the story of our outfalls and, uh, you know, and I, I will, and, and ask question when, when George and his team went in there back in twenty nineteen at, at Bond Secure. They did a very good job trying to shore that up, and we did get five years out of that repair, but, uh, you know, it is, is like Mr. Councilman Boone says, that was a little bit of a patch job just to hold things together, and now we, we've got the, the underlying cause is that that material, that pipe material has eroded into nothing, has fallen. The, uh, the outfalls, the concrete structure is undermined. It's just time for a, a replacement. That's just where we are on that one. So, we bought five years and we've been watching it, but now it's, you know, that, we knew we had to get in there and, uh, and get it done. So, I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Do you need to cover, uh, item nine while you're there?
Yeah, I'll be glad to, um.
Are, do you have any others, Richard?
Yes, seven and nine, so.
Why don't you go ahead and cover those while you're up?
I'll be glad to. Uh, item number seven, uh, I'm excited about, uh, because it's been something that we uh, Councilman Burrell, when did we take ownership of K One? Was that June of twenty nineteen or twenty twenty?
Probably been six years, yeah.
Yeah, um, so we've been, we've been working on this since the date that we took ownership, which is five, six years ago. But we did have, uh, the bid opening for the K One Hatch Project. We did receive five qualifying bidders. Price range to between six million and fifty-five thousand to seven point seven. Second lowest bid was six point two, so we still have a high confidence that we know what the, the price of that project is. And we're asking your consideration of awarding that bid. I know that we're, uh, we are over budget. The good news is a majority of this money will not be, uh, appropriated and expended until the next fiscal year. And I know Kim, uh, feels confident that we can budget that additional capital, uh, at that time uh, to, to not put too hard of a hit on the twenty twenty-five budget. I will tell you, this has a peculiar, peculiar process that I've never done before. The federal EDA, what will happen, we will fully, if you award this contract tonight, we will fully execute the contract, meaning everybody's gonna sign it. Then we have to put the whole package together, ship it off to EDA for their blessings. Hopefully, that's a one or two-week process at the most. And then we will, with their blessing, we'll be able to execute the notice to proceed. And the big thing is we have to, by the grant from EDA, have to be under contract with the contractor by no later than July sixth, twenty twenty-five. So, hopefully, uh, we haven't cut it too close, and we've got a little bit of room to spare in there, but it has been a slog, and we're proud to be at this moment, and I'll be glad to answer any questions.
I just wanna write, remind anyone that, that may be watching this or in the audience that we do have three point five million dollars in grants for this, for this project as well.
That is correct. Item number nine, as you know, uh, this is a, one that's been going on for a while, but we, uh, we entered into a, uh, partnership with Mason J C Condominium, which is at, I believe, fifty Fairhope Avenue, uh, for an extension of an M S E wall system there on the, uh, north bank of Stax Gully that would pick up on a project that was completed roughly circa twenty fourteen. Um, and, and take it down basically to the terminus at South Mobile Street. Uh, this council was agreeable to participate with a not-to-seat of a hundred thousand dollars. Uh, the bid opened at roughly, uh, a hundred and eighty-six, a hundred and eighty-nine thousand. Uh, we had an overrun on, uh, select field, um, and I, I will explain kinda how that, how that happened. Um, you know, the engineers designed an M S E wall system that's of a certain height, at a certain location, and part of that system is you have to backfill behind it to get every, all the grades to tie in. And, uh, you know, there was, uh, there was a bust in, in the total amount of material. And, you know, it's not like the contractor could just stop at the quantity. He would fall short of getting the grade back up to where it needs to be. Uh, the good news is the damage to the city is minimal because Mason J C is gonna take the brunt of, of this overage. As well as you'll recall, they will end up, they, they have bore a hundred percent of the cost of the engineering as well. So, uh, you know, at the end of the day, we're gonna settle down at about a two-hundred and thirty thousand dollar project that, that, that's on city property, that is protecting the gully, also benefiting the private property owner uh, at a cost of a hundred thousand dollars to the city. So we, we need to approve that change order so we can proceed with, uh, the, uh, the project getting, uh, to its end and, and, and closing out. So I'll be glad to answer any questions on that.
Questions, council?
So the change order is to, is, one more time, Richard, I'm sorry. We're doing a change order because of what now? We're extending the project or changing the scope in some manner?
There's no more, the, the, so, uh, the mechanically stabilized earth wall, okay, was, was designed with so many, so much height, so much length and, and everything else. But when you get to the top of that wall, you've gotta back, as you go up, you gotta backfill that wall and then tie it all in to grade. Uh, you know, uh, Wooton Engineering was the engineer that was hired by Mason J C. He was a good engineer. Uh, they came up short on the quantities of what it was gonna take to do that. So we had a, an overrun just in the select field that went back behind that wall. And it, and the project had to, you had to, you couldn't leave it with, with that exposed. Uh, but in the memorandum of understanding that this council went into with the private property owners, it was understood, our cap was one hundred thousand and no more. And so they'll bear the brunt of this change order. But we are, part of our agreement, we manage the project, so we're, we're handling everything on the front end, and they're reimbursing.
Okay, very good.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Richard. Let me back up a moment and, uh, catch committee reports, please. Uh, Councilman Martin?
I don't have anything.
Okay.
No report.
Councilman Congress?
Councilman Boone?
I believe catching this at the beginning of the month here, that we didn't have it, we haven't had any meetings this month, so I don't have any committee updates, but I did wanna make sure I didn't overlook that on the agenda. Okay, now we'll move on to department head reports. Paige, and go, go over your agenda items if you will, please.
I just have one agenda item, number twenty-two, um, to execute a contract with Pyro Productions for our Fourth of July fireworks show. Um, again, um, within budget, and this is our turnkey show for the Fourth of July, which is on a Friday this year. So if y'all have, don't have any questions, that's all I have.
Questions?
Nope. Love to see that price stabilizing.
Well.
Well, they keep the price the same. They may just.
You may be a few shells less. Yeah, you might have a few shells less than a year before.
They can give us a forty thousand dollar show. It might be two rockets.
Right.
This is correct. Thank y'all.
Thank you, Paige.
Good afternoon.
Good chief.
I've got item number twenty-one, which is to award a bid to procure two new twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-four or twenty-twenty-five Chevrolet Silverado pickup trucks for the police department. One of those is a budgeted vehicle, and the other one is a grant, grant funding.
When is the, what was the first thing you said? One was a grant, was the second thing you said?
The other one is budgeted.
What grant was that?
That's the Senator Tuberville funding.
Questions on that?
No.
Thank you.
Good evening. Recreation has several on the agenda for tonight. Number ten uh, in regards to, uh, rebuilding some docks at the marina. We have several docks that are in excess of ten years old. Um, they were not built with very good structural integrity then. Um, and ever since with the storms and everything, we've been having, we've just been band-aiding them and fixing them as we go. Um, but currently, we have about eleven slips in the marina that are unusable, uh, because we've had uh, dock, docks that need repair. Um, so this is a budgeted item, and we did get, uh, many quotes on it. Uh, and it's a public works project under a hundred thousand, so asking for your approval on that expense so we can get these docks repaired.
And that'll take care of all eleven?
Correct.
Any additional?
Yes, sir. Anything?
And a little bit extra?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, okay, great.
Um, number eleven, uh, is in regards to shade structures at Valana. This, uh, would be sixteen uh, shade structures that will shade every, uh, bleacher seat, uh, on all the youth baseball fields. The only fields it will not cover is the high school, uh, baseball field and the Dixie Boys, um, field that's down the hill. And we look to, to maybe try to do that one next year. I wanna redo the, the backstop and get rid of some of that old chain link and stuff, so. We'll look at trying to do that one next year. I'm sorry.
About the Dixie?
Yes, sir.
Yeah. That's also a budgeted item. I believe it came in under budget.
And we are way under budget.
Be telling them that now. It'll go up next time.
That's right. Um, number twenty um, is an unexpected expense. Um, at Quail Creek, our main irrigation well pump um, went down, actually, we replaced it in the fall of twenty-four. Um, and the line is, became clogged. And so the, the pump burned up. Um, Griner Well Systems are the ones that put that well in in the fall of twenty-four. They are going, going to warranty that pump, uh, for us in that if they are able to do this cleaning of the line. So, there's a lot of different, uh, things that go into that cleaning, but basically this expense would be to clean uh, the wall of the pipe and the intake, um, using a lot of different methods, acid treatments, uh, brushing the screens, doing, uh, airlifts, evacuations, all these different, uh, measures they go through to make sure the intake line is well cleaned out so that when they put the new pump back in it, we don't have that same thing happen again. So, uh, in reality, we should probably budget to do this every three to five years to make sure we don't have this, uh, happen again. Um, so we live and learn.
So we will have to get a new pump, correct?
They are going to warranty the pump.
They are warranting the pump, okay.
The thirty is just, uh, the twenty-nine is just to clean?
It is to clean the, uh, intake lines and reset the pump into the line.
And their, their laborers, got you. They do a good job for us.
They, they are very fair people.
What's the name of that company?
Uh, Griner Well Systems.
Griner Wells, okay, very good.
Um, and so this expense, um, in talking to, to Kim, we, we saved about sixty-four thousand dollars in the greens renovation project, uh, because the bid came in. Um, so we were hoping to transfer this money from capital improvements into the general maintenance fund for the golf course to get this procedure done. Um, and the, the greens renovation project is underway. Most of the ten greens have been, uh, dug up, removed. Um, and just had a meeting there this afternoon with the contractors, and, uh, all is going well so far. But we would like to have water when we plant new grass on them.
That'd be a good idea.
That'd be a good idea, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Pat.
Thanks, Pat.
Good evening.
Evening, Wes.
Uh, I have agenda items, number fifteen and number sixteen will go numerically and start with fifteen. Uh, fifteen is the, uh, awarding of the construction for phase two cast iron replacement. Uh, one million, uh, four million, one hundred and seven thousand, one hundred and twelve dollars. Any questions? It's a big project, um, something we've been looking forward to, uh, for quite some time in our department.
I do have a question, Wes.
Yes, sir.
This one, there was a couple of change orders in this one last time, that up that price to that four million, correct?
Uh, no change orders in this one, no, sir.
This work didn't have any?
No, sir.
Okay.
This one is three hundred thousand dollars over budget, and we'll, since it's gonna split two budget years, we'll budget that remaining three hundred thousand, right at three hundred thousand next year.
Okay, that's, so they were just over, was a change order just over?
Right, yes, sir.
Okay.
Different group than who did phase one?
Uh, same group, same construction company, yeah. So, uh, we talked about this, uh, uh, two meetings ago, I think, um, but two bids, uh, came, and a four million dollar price tag came down to thirty-five thousand dollars difference between the bids, so um, very competitive V bid. Um, that was, uh, a lot to do with, uh, Erin Wolf and her staff and, and, and the specifications that they outlined for this phase. So, uh, want to, uh, show appreciation to her and her staff for that.
Wes, I'm, I'm gonna be watching this, um, closely. They start having overruns and spending money without coming to the city, I'm gonna come completely unglued, and it's not gonna be a good day for them. I'm not kidding.
Um, Council President, if I may, this is the construction, not the inspection, so.
Right.
They're all doing, yeah, working on the same things, yeah. I didn't, I didn't call any names out. I'm just, just a warning.
Understandable, yeah, I, I get it. Uh, this is a big, I will tell you, this is a big, big phase. Um, we, we started with phase one, uh, we kinda. phase. We started with Phase 1. We kind of scaled our expectations as it pertains to the sizing of the phases. This is a really big phase. So, we're excited about it, but it is a big chunk of the cast iron coming out of the ground. Any more questions before we move on? I also have agenda item number 16. This is the overage for the inspection for Phase 1. Mayor and I met with Magnolia River the Monday following the Tuesday meeting where we discussed this publicly. Had a good, in the Boyett House, we call them come-to-Jesus meetings. We had a come-to-Jesus meeting with Magnolia River. They were receptive to the demands that we made. And we put some measures in place in our department to oversee some things a little bit differently going forward. But do want to present this to you today because, and one thing that I left out that I, or maybe I didn't leave it out but didn't think it was of context, but maybe I do now, is, one, again, everything that happens in this department is my fault. And I'll gladly take whatever is coming. This was not a bid. It's a professional service. So, I did want to make that public that they didn't bid on this work and somebody not get it and then they go over and then that skews the bid. I will, I'll 100% take whatever blame is coming here. And the work was 100% done. I do want to emphasize that point as well. I felt like it was emphasized in the last meeting, but I felt the need to emphasize it here. That's all.
I'm not, well, Wes, you know, this one really gets, this one really gets me. And that's why the comments for the previous.
Oh, yeah, for sure.
It's a different, it's a different company, but it's related to the same work and it's a 15% overrun. I'm curious, was the previous contract a not-to-exceed? And did they just exceed it by almost $176,000? I don't think you have the authority to give them permission. I appreciate you blaming yourself, but I don't think that you had any, you know, authority to say, yeah, you can go over by 15%. So, I'm curious from a legal standpoint if it was a not-to-exceed contract. If it was a not-to-exceed contract, why did they go over? Why did they not come back and ask for more money?
That's a great question. And I mean, one, first part of that, you're correct. I don't feel like my position gives me the authority to appoint or approve overages. It was a not-to-exceed contract. That is also correct. And why, that was, that was the third part of that question was why. It's a little bit not their fault, but the fact that they went over on a not-to-exceed contract is their fault. The project went longer than we thought it was going to, 100%, hands down. It did. There was some significant weather events built into that timeline. There were some, being a little overzealous with what we felt like we could get done in the timeframe that we allotted. Therefore, the construction work that got done had to be inspected. The miss there is, it is a little bit of my fault. And I think I would argue that a little bit in the fact that, that if I had done a better job managing the inspection part of that project, I would have caught that overage come to you. We would have had a probably, to some degree, a little bit of a hard conversation, but maybe not as hard as we're having right now. But I think it is my fault. I think it was an oversight in management as it pertains to the dollars for inspection. We tracked those construction dollars really, really close. We didn't go over. I mean, we're talking about a $3 million contract. We didn't go over. We went over on the inspection part, which was a small percentage of the overall purse of the project. And so, I would argue a little bit that it was my fault in not tracking those dollars from the inspection side as closely as I should have.
I don't think it was a small fraction. The total amount was what?
175.
Four, five million. But no, the inspection contract was 1.9 million.
Well, that's not, that's not, yeah. So, there's a, there's a ton of things built into that. So, you got, you've got a 100% leak survey that that company did for us. That's $500,000 of that. We're talking about, the inspection part for Phase 1 is only a small fraction, I would say a small, I would say 25% of the large dollar amount that you're seeing right there. Don't let that one point
None.
$9 million number lead you to believe that that is all inspection for Phase 1 because that's not correct.
I only just said, because that's what you had just said.
For Phase 2, just the $4 million, $700,000 of it is inspection.
Right.
So, if that, if that helps.
So, then I should go back to the inspection portion and say they didn't go over by 15%. They went over by 75%.
Yeah, so that's the, I mean, I know they're completely.
It doesn't look good any way you cut it.
Yeah. It's just, it seems out of order and it just seems like, maybe, I don't think anybody, I think everybody was trying to do their job, you know, and if you missed it, you know, touche to you for being accountable. But when you start getting, it seems like in a fair and honest handshake or, you know, when it's a not-to-exceed and everybody's a part of the team, you know, if it's four or 5,000 or, it shouldn't be any now. But when you start getting into the $200,000 mark, you know, and there's no communication whatsoever on nobody's behalf, you know, that's when, you know, it doesn't look good, you know? I just, you know, and I feel bad because we have to do a better job of being good stewards, you know, you know. And so, I take that personal, not personal, but that's my responsibility, our responsibility, you know? So, it's not chump change. I mean, we are blessed.
No, absolutely.
We are blessed. We are. We are a blessed city. But, you know, we can't, we can't do this, though, you know? And I know I'm beating a dead horse, but I just wanted known publicly that this, this is not, this is not how we do business, in my opinion, my humble opinion. I don't think this is the way anybody should do business. There should be some line of communication, you know? Even a question, hey, you know, this is, you know, look at this, you know? We sent this $94,000 invoice, you know? I'm like, that's a significant invoice past what we already not-to-exceed. So, and then it kept going after that, you know? At some point, a flag should have been raised, you know? I just, you know, it would have been good if they come to the table and say, you know, that's right, you know, how can we fix this? You know, I'm hoping that that's what happened. If not, you know?
Yeah, Wes, yes, sir.
I don't think that's good business.
That's.
Anything else, Wes?
No, sir, that's all.
Okay.
Thank you, Wes.
Yes, sir.
Good evening.
Evening, Ben.
Letch Department's got 13 and 14. This is the material for the 46 project. What we did, we split these up in two, made a little challenge and to do it like this. But that way, the customer, citizens would partner with on it. That way, we could find out the best way to charge or call sharing on it. So, the first one is the cities, it would be the cities' material list. And the second one, the alternate one, would be the hospital. And we feel like we've, like I said, there was a lot of parts to this. We feel like we've looked over it, looked over it, looked over it. But we did put a contingency in there just in case if we were, say we missed 10 bolts, we didn't have to come back up here and ask for 10 bolts. And then, then just the timeframe it is right now, some of these lead times on this material are 30 to 40 weeks, some of them are almost a year. We don't know what's going to happen by the time the rubber goods come in, if prices are going to increase. So, that was one thing Erin and I'd sit down and talk about, about putting this in there. And we reached out to Marcus on some of this also. But we tried to split it up between multiple vendors. We went, we took our time and went through line item by line item to try to, to try to get the best deal the city could get. Any questions?
Questions, council? Getting close, huh?
Getting close.
I mean, I'm just.
I kind of feel like once this is done, for the electrical department, we will be, I don't think we'll ever catch up on anything, but we will be mostly caught up.
It'd be nice to talk about something besides 46 KV project.
I mean, I think we talked about 46 KV for about half my life.
On a, on a better note, we, so if you get to, get a chance to ride down to the bluff, we finally got that big black box out that had pole mount transformers in that trans closure. So, we got all of that taken out, wrecked out last Thursday and Friday. So, we getting a little closer down there, too.
Where is this big peak?
Down at the pier, waterfront.
There before it falls in. Everything else falling in.
Knock on wood.
The base there, you ain't got no problem there.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ben.
Thank you, sir.
Fill up there.
Good evening.
Evening, sir.
I've got 17 and we'll do 17 and 19. We'll start with 17. So, this is to award the contract for the force main from north section and south section to Hemp Hill. We had three competitive bids. Considering the dollar amount, they were, they were very close, very competitive, but it was a significant overage of what we budgeted. I've been working with Mayor and Kim to find some money, find some overages, and we've come up with a solution to fund this, to make up that difference.
If I may, to Councilor President, one thing I do want to mention that, you know, this is something we've been talking about probably as, I feel like as long as the 46 KV, is the, this, we originally knew that when we did this Restore project, which is a $13 million upgrade to our sewer system, that we would have a portion of that that would belong to the city and that's the force mains that tie these little stations together. We had estimated that it would be about $4 million, which was several years ago. And this is the project that we're talking about. So, we're basically getting $19 million of work for this 6.4 million, which is huge. It enabled us to rehab six lift stations, you know, inspect and rehab 2,000 manholes, line miles of sewer line, not to mention, you know, rehab an additional, or build two lift stations and rehab an additional six. So, it's a huge project. This is the final portion of this project. It's going to be one that nobody's going to want to see happen, to be honest, because it's going to be inconvenient. But it will absolutely make a difference in our system and will tie all that work together.
It's going to span two budget years, you said?
Well, this one will, we hope to have this closed out by the end of the year. That's our goal. So, it will, it will span two budget years, but we're hoping to capture this one in this budget year. And then the overage, or the extra that we're taking from another project will span two budget years. And that's why we said we'd be able to budget for that next year. That's why we're able to do the transfer from one project to the other.
When their grant money's involved, you said?
$13 million grant money from Restore.
So, if this is six and a half, and then, is it a transfer that we get paid back on then?
With Restore, yeah, you, yes. Well, I don't know.
So.
This part of the project is not. Yeah, this part of the project is not.
This is city funded.
I see what you're saying. So, you're adding that to the grants and calling it 19 million?
That's right.
And I'm not sure how, Restore is one that you have to apply a rate like that.
Yes, and this project, Restore, the Restore grant, not until this work is completed.
Got you. Questions for Darryl? Is that the only one you have?
Nope, I've got one more.
Uh-oh.
All right, number 19. This is a fairly easy one. So, we've got, we've got a big pile of scrap water meters and copper. And we don't want to just throw them in the trash. We'd like to get some of those funds back. So, this is for you to approve for us to sell it, those meters and copper for scrap to the highest bidder and try to put some of that money back to the city.
I think we did good previous times.
We did, we did. We did very well.
Yeah, so that's good deal, yeah.
And that's all I've got unless you have any questions.
I think we can cover everything else in the, thank you, Darryl.
All right, thank you.
I think we can cover everything else that's on the agenda in the meeting. There were one or two other little small things that I know that myself or the mayor can handle when we get into the meeting. I do want to tell you that there was something I'd like to add. It came up this afternoon. It really, it's just a letter of support for a couple of our IT providers that are applying for grants. And it's just authorizing the mayor to write letters of support for MediaCom and Comcast for grant applications. We wanted to be fair to all of them. We checked with our IT consultant. He said there's no, there's no risk in writing these letters of support. It's only beneficial. So, I'll ask for an amendment to the agenda when we start and add this as item 23, if nobody has any objections to that.
So, these are just letters saying that we support money, possible future grant monies coming to us through these particular?
Just to help underserved community get internet service.
Okay, that same project.
I've already, I've emailed back this afternoon. I don't have a chance to see that. I have, we've gotten a request from C Spire also. So, if you could, I mean, if anybody needs to ask for a letter.
All right, so we can, we can modify that and just say to write letters of support for MediaCom, Comcast, and C Spire. How about that? Right, you can do that. All right, let's, let's go ahead and take about a three-minute break, come back, try to start right after 6:00. Lisa, I have a question.